We will be recording this hearing. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Discharge to Surface Water Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for Bergen County Utilities Authority, the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park. We often use the acronym NEJPTIS in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick, and I am the Hearing Officer. I am also the Section Chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting within the Division of Water Quality at the Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Jonathan Hennessyck is within our bureau, and he will be providing instructions on how to provide testimony today. Josie Castaldo is the Case Manager for the BCUA permit, while Bennett Moss, Jonathan Hennessyck, and Marcelo Gracia are the Case Managers for the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park respectively. Josie Castaldo will provide an overview of the subject permits. Also here today are many NJDEP staff, including Susan Rosenwinkel, Assistant Director at the Division of Water Quality, and others who are part of the CSO program or part of other NJDEP programs. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which should take about four minutes. Daisy Depas, also of the Division of Water Quality, will then present this information in Spanish. We will then provide an overview of Microsoft Teams and a short summary of the permits in English and then in Spanish. This introductory information should take about 20 minutes in total. As established in the NEJPTIS regulations of the New Jersey Administrative Code at 7:14A/15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the departments here has listened and taken testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including the affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these proposed draft permit actions. The department will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that verbal and written statements have equal weight. So if someone is not comfortable speaking and just has a written statement prepared, they can submit it electronically where it will receive equal weight with verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is DWQ_BSWP@depp nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The department will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final NEJPTIS permit decisions. The permittees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone else who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to DWQ_BSWP@depp nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Please note that the public comment period will end at 11:59 PM on November 13, 2023. If you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and I will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. So in view of the time limitations, I am asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may only testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or at 8:00 PM, whichever occurs first. This same information I just read now will be read in Spanish by one of our staff, Daisy Depas. After that, we will turn the discussion over to Jonathan Hennessyck, who will provide an overview of Microsoft Teams. After that, Josie Castaldo will then give some factual information about the NEJPTIS permits. Daisy?
Hola, abriré la audiencia en este momento. Deja que el registro muestre que es la hora 6:10 y la audiencia pública ya está oficialmente abierta. Tengan en cuenta que grabaremos esta audiencia. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo para los renovaciones de permisos de descarga a agua superficial. Desabordamiento del alcantillado combinado, el sistema de eliminación de descarga de contaminantes de Nueva Jersey para autoridad servicios públicos del candado Bergen. En municipalidad de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y el repúblico de Ridgefield Park. En menudo usamos el acronio NEJPTIS cuando nos referiamos en la programa de sistemas de eliminación de descarga de contaminantes de Nueva Jersey. Mi nombre es John Manick, soy el oficial de la audiencia pública y el jefe de la sesión de oficina de los permisos de agua superficial y pretempento de la división de calidad de agua en el departamento de Protección Ambiente. También ha denudado el departamento o NJDEP. Jonathan Hennessyck está adentro de nuestra oficina y abrirá instrucciones sobre cómo de dejar testimonio hoy. Josie Castillo es la administradora de casos para el permiso de BCUA, mientras que Bennett Moss, Jonathan Hennessyck, y Marcelo Gracia son los administradores del caso para el municipal de Fort Lee y la ciudad de Hackensack, y el pueblo de Ridgefield Park respectamente. Marcelo Gracia abrirá una versión general de los permisos en cuestión. También hoy aquí hay muchos empleados de NJDEP, incluyendo a Rosen Rosenwinkel, de subordinante de la división de calidad en agua, y otras personas que son de parte de la programa CSO y de otros programas en NJDEP. Ahora proporcionaré información sobre el proceso de la audiencia pública, lo que tomará unos cuatro minutos. Yo, Daisy Depas, también de la división de Alcalde de Agua, representaba esta información en español. A continuo estar, procesionamos una descripción general de Microsoft y un resumo breve de los permisos en inglés y luego en español. Esta información introductiva ya traemos... Esta información otra una ya tomará unos 20 minutos en total, como se establecen en las regulaciones de NEJPTIS del Código Administrado de Nueva Jersey en 7.14A/15. Esta es una audiencia pública, lo cual significa que el departamento está aquí para escuchar y tomar testimonios para... ...parte de nuestros reglamentos. El propósito de esta audiencia es proporcionar al público interesado, incluyendo las comunidades afectadas, las oportunidades de ser escuchados y representados estas actividades de los desaportamientos de permiso en cuestión. El departamento exatería declaraciones verbales o por escrito. Tengan en cuenta que los declaraciones por escrito y las verbales tienen la misma importancia. Así que si no quieren hablar hoy, su testimonio preparadas debe ser enviado electrónicamente y le darán la misma importancia del testimonio verbal. El correo electrónico para enviar comentarios por escrito es DWQ_BSWP@depp nj.gov. Ahora enviamos el correo en el chat. El propósito de esta audiencia es escribir sus comentarios y preocupaciones. El departamento responda a todos los comentarios significados y relevantes, y tanto verbales como escritos en el documento que representa comentarios del público como parte de las decisiones finales sobre los permisos de NEJPTIS. Los permisos y todas las personas que han representado comentarios habrían una copia electrónica del documento en la declaración final, siempre que no es indicado su correo electrónico. También agregamos copias... También agregamos copas aquí a quien lo solicita, a quien no han enviado comentarios. Suere su correo de electrónico en el chat o envíalo a WDQ_BSWP@depp nj.gov si quieren recibir una copia. Tengan en cuenta de que el periodo de enviar comentarios públicos terminará el 13 de noviembre de 2003 a las 11:59 PM. Si desean representar comentarios públicos de manera verbal hoy, escriba su nombre, organización, y correo electrónico en el chat. Los llamaremos por su nombre cuando sea su turno. Cuando los llamaré, dejan y deletren su nombre y apellido con la clara acción para el registro. Tenemos un tarógrifo justial asignado para transcribir el testimonio abajo. Si dejan hablar un representante de su organización, le pido que identifique la organización. Queremos escuchar a todos y dejar la oportunidad de ser escuchados. Debajo del tiempo limitado, les pido que su testimonio no exida los cinco minutos. Cada uno solamente puede hablar una vez hasta escuchamos a todas las personas que están aquí, y dejan dar testimonio. En caso que el tiempo lo permita y sea posible escuchar al final de audiencia, si una persona deja declarar una segunda vez, éramos todo posible para permitirlo. Pedimos que todos que hablan y los miembros de la audiencia respetan el derecho a cada persona presente a ser escuchado y que eviten conductos que podrían interferir con la representación del testimonio. Esta audiencia terminará cuando concluyan los testimonios a las ocho o lo que ocurra primero. Esta misma información debe de escuchar ahora ser representado por mí, Daisy Depas. Después, le pedimos para Jonathan Hennessyck, este representante, una descripción general de Microsoft a continuar, Josie Castillo, para información factual sobre los permisos de NEJPTIS.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Hennessyck, and I will be speaking to you about commenting during... Sorry, during the public hearing. In order to inform the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony, move your cursor around to open the Teams meeting toolbar, which will appear near the bottom center of your screen. Click on the chat icon to open the meeting chat box on the side of the screen. Type your name, organization, and email address in the "Type a new message" field at the bottom of the meeting chat box. When entering this information, use the following format: First name, last name, organization, and email address. See below for an example. Click the "Send" icon or press Enter on your keyboard to submit your message and notify the NJDEP Hearing Officer of your interest in submitting verbal testimony. To unmute or mute your microphone, toggle your microphone icon. To disable or enable your camera, toggle your camera icon. If you're using a phone, you can hit *6 to mute and unmute. The same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Daisy Depas. After that, Josie Castaldo will provide an overview of permits that were issued.
Hola, mi nombre es Jonathan Hennessyck, y les estoy hablando sobre cómo comentar durante la presidencia pública. Para informar al oficial de la audiencia pública de NEJPTIS sobre su interés de dar testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para que... ...aprende la... Sorry. Para informar al oficial de audiencia pública de NEJPTIS sobre su interés de dejar testimonio verbal, mueve su cursor para que empieza la baja de su herramientas de uniones de Teams en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Haga un clic en el icono de chat, abrir el meeting chat a un lado de su pantalla. Escriva su nombre completo y el nombre de su organización que representa y su correo electrónico en el campo que dice "Escríba un nuevo mensaje". En el parte inferior del meeting chat. Cuando escriba esta información, usa el formato nombre, apellido, organización, y correo electrónico. Lleva el ejemplo abajo. Haga un clic en el icono o presiona el teclado Enter en su teclado para enviar un mensaje y notificar al oficial de la pública sobre su interés de dejar testimonio verbal. Para activar o silenciar su micrófono, activa el icono de micrófono. Para deshabilitar o activar la cámara, activa el icono de la cámara. Si hay que conectar... Si he conectado por teléfono para activar o silenciar su micrófono, por favor oprima el stricto seis. Después, Josie Castillo presenta un resumen de los permisos que están en cuestión.
Good evening. My name is Josie Castaldo of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pretreatment Permitting, and I am the Case Manager for the Bergen County Utilities Authority Discharge to Surface Water Permit. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing, the renewal of the NEJPTIS permit for the BCUA, permit number NJ0020028, where the draft permit was issued on September 7, 2023, and the renewal of the NEJPTIS CSO permits for the Borough of Fort Lee, permit number NJ0034517, the City of Hackensack, permit number NJ0108766, and the Village of Ridgefield Park, permit number NJ0109118, where the draft permits were issued on August 17, 2023. All permits are posted on the NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. As stated in the draft permit, the comment period will end at 11:59 PM on November 13, 2023, in accordance with NJAC 714A 15.10 and 15.14. The individual NEJPTIS CSO permits for the combined sewer systems of Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park are hydraulically connected to the Bergen County Utilities Authority, abbreviated to BCUA, Water Pollution Control Facility. Combined Sewer Overflows, or CSOs, are discharges from combined sewer systems. Combined sewer systems are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and cement runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. Combined sewer systems are still present in certain older cities in the state. BCUA owns and operates a wastewater treatment plant named the Little Ferry Water Pollution Control Facility. The facility treats wastewater collected in a 135-square-mile service area in New Jersey, which includes the Borough of Fort Lee, City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park as customer communities. BCUA does not own or operate any CSO outfalls. BCUA, the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the Village of Ridgefield Park own separate portions of one hydraulically connected combined sewer system. Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park do not own or operate any wastewater treatment facilities. Dry weather wastewater flows from Fort Lee, Hackensack, and Ridgefield Park are conveyed to the BCUA wastewater treatment facility. When the conveyance capacity of the collection system and/or the wastewater treatment facility is exceeded, excess combined sewage flows past through CSO outfalls. In Fort Lee, two CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hudson River, which is classified as saline estuary to category two waters. In Hackensack, two CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hackensack River, which is classified as saline estuary one category two waters. In Ridgefield Park, six CSO outfalls discharge combined sewage into the Hackensack River, which is classified as saline estuary one category two waters, and the Overpeck Creek, which is classified as saline estuary two category two waters. These classifications are dictated by the NJDEP's Surface Water Quality Standards. To comply with federal and state CSO regulations, the Village of Ridgefield Park, the Borough of Fort Lee, the City of Hackensack, and the BCUA have committed to meet the requirements of the presumption approach, which requires elimination or capture of a minimum 85% of the annual average combined sewage collected in the system during wet weather. Presently, Fort Lee's system is at 76.4% capture, Hackensack's system is at 68.5% capture, and Ridgefield Park's system is at 75.4% capture. The projects, which include both gray and green infrastructure, are projected to achieve 85.4% capture for Fort Lee, 86.8% capture for Hackensack, and 85.6% capture for Ridgefield Park. Each municipality will incorporate CSO control strategies to achieve a minimum wet weather percent capture value within its own municipal border without CSO-related projects being done by BCUA at this time. The three municipalities will be pursuing sewer separation at this time, which is expected to result in overall reduction in combined sewage flow to BCUA over time as specified in the LTCP. Additional projects as part of the LTCP include, but are not limited to, select sewer separation, a stormwater infrastructure project, proposed CSO storage tanks, and green infrastructure. Some of these projects will also help address localized flooding. As per the Long Term Control Plan and proposed NEJPTIS permit requirements, these projects are projected to be completed over multiple NEJPTIS permit cycles. This same information I just read will now be read in Spanish by Daisy Depas, and after that, we will return to Joe Manick and begin taking testimony.
Hola, mi nombre es Josie Castillo, de la Oficina de Permisos de Agua Superficial y pretempento de la... Y soy la administradora de los casos para permisos CSO de repúblico Ridgefield Park. Les quería comentar alguna información sobre el tema de audiencia de hoy. La renovación de los permisos del NEJPTIS para el permiso número NJ0020028 de la autoría de servicios públicos del candado Bergen, donde el borrador del permiso se obtome el 7 de septiembre de 2023. La renovación de los permisos de NEJPTIS CSO para el permiso número NJ0034517 del municipal de Fort Lee, el permiso de NJ0108766 del candado de Hackensack, y el permiso número NJ0109118 del permiso pueblo de Ridgefield Park, donde se emiten los permisos primariales el 17 de agosto de 2023. Todos los permisos están públicos en el sitio web de SO de la División de Alcalde de Agua de NJDEP. Como el audiencia en los bordajes de los permisos, el cuidado de... Como él indica, los bordajes de los permisos, el primero del fundamentarios entrará el 13 de noviembre de 2003 a las 11:59, y ha recibido los artículos 7.14A, 15.10, y 15.14 de Código Administración de Nueva Jersey. Los permisos individuales de superficie de NEJPTIS para los sistemas de alcantillado combinados de Fort Lee, Hackensack, y Ridgefield Park están hidricamente conectados a la instalación de control de la continuidad de aguas en la autoridad de servicios públicos del candado de Bergen, abreviado PCUA. Los desaboremientos de alcantillado combinados, o CSO, son descargados de sustancias de alcantarilla combinada. Los sistemas de alcantillado combinado son alcantarillas que se desinjen hasta décadas para recorrectar las aguas de lluvia y de secho. Aguas residentiales domésticas y aguas residentiales industriales en los mismas tuberías. Dos sistemas de alcantarillas combinadas todavía están presentes algunas ciudades más antiguas del estado. BCUA posece y opera una planta de tratamiento de aguas residentiales llamada instalaciones de control de las conteneraciones de agua del Little Ferry. Las instalaciones tratan las aguas residenciales colectadas en una área de servicio de 135 millas cuerdas en Nueva Jersey, que incluye los municipados de Fort Lee y la ciudad de Hackensack, y el pueblo de Ridgefield Park como comunidades de clientes. BCUA no posee ni operan algunas mesones de CSO. BCUA, el repúblico de Fort Lee, la ciudad de Hackensack, y el pueblo de Ridgefield Park posecen partes separadas de un semestre de alcantillados combinados conectados hidricamente. Ni Fort Lee, Hackensack, y Ridgefield Park posecen o pareren ninguna instalaciones de tratamiento de aguas residenciales. Los fluidos de agua residenciales durante tiempos secos de Fort Lee, Hackensack, y Ridgefield Park se transcurran a la planta de tratamiento de aguas residenciales de BCUA. Cuando se exija la captura de temporalidad del sistema de reportización o la planta de tratamiento de las aguas residenciales, el exceso de agua residenciales combinadas pasa en través de los ministerios de las CSOs. En Fort Lee, dos emisoras de CSO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hudson, que está clasificado como una agua catorría dos de estruario salino dos. En Hackensack, dos emisoras de CSO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hackensack, que está clasificado como agua catorría dos salino uno. En Ridgefield Park, seis emisoras de CSO descargan aguas residenciales combinadas en el río Hackensack, que está clasificando como agua estrenario salino uno categoría dos, y el río Overpeck, que está clasificado como estranero salino dos y catorría dos. Esta clasificación está dictada por las estrandas de calidad de agua superficiales de NJDEP. Para... Para cumplir, para cumplir con las regulaciones estadas y federales de SO, el público de Ridgefield Park, el municipal de Fort Lee, y el ciudad de Hackensack de la BCUA se han comprimido a cumplir con los requisitos de enfoque, enfoque de presiones, que exigen la eliminación o la captura de un mínimo de 85% del primer año de aguas residenciales combinadas recolectadas en la semestre durante el clima húmedo. Actualmente, la sistema de Fort Lee está un 76.4% de captura, y sistema de Hackensack está a una 68.5% de captura. La sistema de Ridgefield Park está a unos 75.4% captura. Se protege que los protectores de incluyen infraestructuras grises y verdes logren de capturar del 85.4% para Fort Lee, una captura de 86.8% para Hackensack, y para capturas de 85.6% para Ridgefield Park. Cada municipal ha incorporado estrategias de control de las CSOs para lograr un valor mínimo de captura proporcional del clima... para lograr un valor mínimo de captura proporcional del clima, clima húmedo durante de los épocas infrontales municipales. Sí que, que sí que BCWA están realizados protejos relaciones con los CSOs en este momento. Los tres municipadas buscarán las observaciones de alcantarillos en este momento. No que se quiera que resultan a una reducción general en el combino flujo, fluido de aguas residenciales BCWA a largo de tiempo, como se especifica en el LTTP. Los técnicos adicionales como parte del plan de control a largo plazo incluye, pero no es límite, a la separación de los selectos alcaldeados, control de aguas privadas y una programa pólito de infracciones verdes. Una nueva sección de bombillos durante tiempos tiernos, una, una nueva planta de tratamiento de CSO, modificaciones o regulatorias mejores de depresión, un transporte adicional. Algunos de los protectores también durante con los hundes localizados. Algún del plan de control a largo paso y los requisitos preocupan los permisos del Nejyptis. Se previenen finalar estos proyectos enteros, van circos de permisos del Nejyptis. Después volvemos a Joe Manick y empezamos a tomar testimonios.
Uh, thank you Daisy, John and Josie. If you would like to comment tonight, please put your name, your organization and your email in the chat, and I will call you. I don't see anyone yet, so we'll give it a little bit of time. Okay, I see Suzanne Atman has put her name in. Suzanne, you have the floor.
Hi Joe, good evening. Hi everyone. I shared quite a few things this morning, so I'll just try to kind of summarize, give you some high-level testimony. I represent Sewage Free Streets and Rivers Advisory Board. And again, want to thank the DP for their very hard work since 2015 to get us to this milestone and for releasing these draft permits and taking this testimony very seriously and looking at ways to finalize the permits, listening to the public and taking into account our views. Thank you for that and as well to the permit holders. As you know, our, our mission is to... is to ask for permits and plans that are equitable, affordable, transparent and effective, of course. So with that in mind, in terms of public engagement, again, we appreciate the shift in focus from participation to public engagement and for the work you're doing to develop a public engagement guidance document. We certainly hope you'll be able to take many of our comments to heart and again, share the next iteration of the draft guidance document with the public so we can put some eyes on it, give you any more feedback that might be helpful for, for the public as well as permit holders. As I mentioned earlier, anything you can do to make it clear how a community member will know that, or how they can be part of the very crucial CSO supplemental teams. However, you can make that, you know, more clear. In terms of meetings, you know, to, to continue to find very prescriptive ways to make meetings accessible. You've mentioned many ways in the permit, but we think there's more ways to ensure that everybody has their voice, an opportunity to have their voice heard and to participate on those teams. You know, we think that the permit, while it provides permittees the option to hold meetings outside of the implementation schedule. Again, as I shared this morning, you know, the, unless, for, for the public, they might be less likely to attend meetings unless A, they know about them, but B, we want to ensure that, that they're held in a way that, you know, that there's more frequent meetings, I think is what I'm trying to say. So ideally, you would include a minimum of one supplemental team meeting per year outside of these implementation meetings, so you can ensure that members are active and engaged with the permit holder. And also, if you can work on, we're still concerned that the public may be underrepresented on those teams, since again, there's no specific requirement for how many community members should participate, nor who they should represent. So clarity around that for the permit holders to ensure that a certain percentage of those team members are community representatives, community members, community organizations, and that a certain percentage are present at any meeting. There are, we were glad to see that all three municipalities are working toward the minimum capture numbers. But again, we're, you know, as we share in quite a few of these meetings, we're disappointed that the timelines are so extended in, in many cases. And really in all three cases. And would love to again encourage the DP to work with the permit holders to ensure that they're leveraging funding, funding that can shorten timelines, but also funding that can shorten timelines in a way that doesn't raise costs for rate payers, especially those from overburdened communities. There's so much federal funding that is kind of funneling through the water bank. We're not always quite sure if municipalities are aware of that or aware of how it could benefit them and a way that they can leverage those funds so that it's, it's equitable for all community members. So again, whatever the DP can do to strengthen your outreach, perhaps even create a guidance document around financing, just like you're doing for public engagement. I think that would go a long way. Again, we're hearing that not all municipalities are aware. And also in terms of funding, just other, you, doing outreach and educating communities around other innovative financing opportunities like stormwater utilities and of course leveraging the wonderful EPA guidance twenty twenty-three Clean Water Act Financial Capability Assessment Guidance, which helps municipalities to understand how to limit the impact of these longer schedules while minimizing the impact on lower-income households. And we know other states are utilizing this guidance with success. Green infrastructure, just want to emphasize that again. It seemed a little light, the use of green infrastructure in these permits. But we know that not only will that benefit the volume reduction, but also has all these other cross-benefits for community members in terms of having them be closer to nature. It also is, is a great thing for mental health and a sense of well-being. So green infrastructure is the future. So again, if the permit holders can start to incorporate or look for opportunities to incorporate more green infrastructure, and we recommend they hire a professional consultant to do a feasibility study so they know exactly where it makes sense. One specific opportunity that we saw in the permits was to, while Ridgefield Park is separating their sewers to at the same time, I'm sorry, and, and at the same time while they're restoring or reconstructing the valley road, to also incorporate green infrastructure into that design and to find other similar opportunities to incorporate green infrastructure into gray infrastructure projects and to do that upfront. Again, want to just emphasize how important it is to ensure that language is clear around how CSO controls will address climate change and sea level rise. We're seeing that it's becoming more and more of a problem. So we hope that the permit holders and the permits will, will better reflect that. It's great to see that Ridgefield Park is using the EPA's CREATE tool for assessing climate resiliency. We hope that could be encouraged for all permit holders in, in this region and as well moving forward. Inland flood protection role, we mentioned that earlier today. You know, how, how will the permit holder be required to adjust their five-year plan to include these new models? How will this be documented and reported on? Yeah, and finally... Again, we're so glad to see that the DP is including a systems cleaning program. That, that's a big change from the, from two thousand fifteen when, 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 or I should say the Long Term Control Plan discussions. But again, it wasn't clear what the enforcement mechanism will be to ensure that the permit implements the system cleaning program. Can you clarify what the performance factors and deficiencies, or I should say how those will be communicated to the public? And, you know, will they be communicated to the public? All right, so the rest of our comments will be very detailed and we will send them to you in a written form. Thank you so much again for holding these meetings and we look forward to seeing how the final permit develops. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, if you would like to speak, please enter your name, your organization and your email in the chat. I don't see anyone else at this point, so we'll just take a pause for a few minutes. And if anyone wants to speak, please again, put your information in the chat and then I will call you to begin. All right, last call for comments. If anyone wants to, to comment tonight, please put your name, your organization and your email address in the chat. This is the last call. Please remember that the public comments will be received by the department until November thirteenth at eleven fifty-nine PM. So that's about a month from now. In the email address that's in the chat, it's the dwq underscore bswp at dep nj.gov. Also, it looks like I haven't seen anyone join the meeting since our last speaker. And I don't see anyone placing their name in there, so I think we're going to, let's, we'll stop the hearing at this point. All right, thank you everyone and have a good evening.
Thank you Joe. Night.